Okay, if I could have your attention, we'll get this special call. Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir. Roll call and special call. Ross is not here. White.
Here.
Taylor is not here. Robinson's not here. Baxter's not here. Fauch.
Here.
Height.
Here.
Witcher.
Present.
And Mayor Smith.
Here.
Okay, so you have a quorum. Now, do you want me to publish the special call?
Please.
This is an email dated October 6th, 2016, from City Attorney Jason Carter. Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 5:00 PM on Monday, October 10, 2016, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock. The purpose of the meeting is, number one, to discuss the current actuarial valuation of the non-uniform pension plan. A copy of the most recent valuation report is attached for your review. And, number two, to proceed with such business scheduled for the 6:00 PM meeting as may be desirable to the council. However, any matter scheduled for a public hearing may only be heard after 6:00 PM in accordance with the previous notice. This is pursuant to Section 2-48.2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code and was sent to all eight council members.
Okay, thank you very much. The, our, you know, we didn't have to make this a special call, but we felt like if we did that it would be a little bit more official and that everybody would pay attention to the starting time. But obviously, some of our council members have reasons not to be here. But we do have a quorum and our actuary is here that looks after our non-uniform pension. You know, I'll kind of introduce this a little bit and then let Jody come up. But for a number of years, our pension, non-uniform pension has been somewhat concerning. I remember even as late as three or four years ago, we were funded in the number somewhere around 80, a little less. And it's the last three years since I've been mayor, it's consistently gone down. Our investments are not turning the numbers that we would hoped. And the number of people that are retiring is putting a strain on our non-uniform pension values. So it got to the point that it's concerning us. And I know Alderman Witcher's been sitting in on some of our pension board meetings and he really felt the concern that we've all felt. And so with his nudge, I think that we agree as far as our staff is concerned that we can't ignore it any longer. And so what my goal is today is our actuaries, Jody Carrera, is here. And I'm going to ask Jody to come up to explain where we are dollars and cents-wise and so that we can get you some idea that this is unacceptable and where we are right now. So Jody, if you'll come up and go over the numbers, y'all feel free to ask any questions. And then we'll let, between Murray and Karen and I, we'll try to walk through any questions. It's all yours, Jody.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jody Carrero. As you mentioned, I'm the actuary with Osburn Carrero and Associates. And we've been serving the North Little Rock Pension Fund for about nine years now. And what I did is I pulled just some of the historical and just a few important things instead of trying to go through the entire valuation. And trust me, the pension board that we actually work for, that Alderman Witcher is a part of, is they go through all of these things in great detail and they do a lot of quizzing and all that kind of stuff. So it's been pretty well-vetted here as far as they're concerned. And they wanted, as well as being asked, to come and give you this summary. So let me do that. Page two there, just very quick background without going into all of the details of the pension funds, just to remind all of us that the city of North Little Rock sponsors a defined benefit, which means the benefit is defined. It's not a pot of money. It is a benefit for people at retirement age. Defined benefit retirement system for all non-uniform employees. And we know that the police and firemen, the uniform folks are covered by the LOFPI system. And you've got some of the clerks in the district courts that are covered by APERS, just a few of those. But all, everyone else is covered by this. All the non-uniform folks that work for the city. And this includes electric and UAD and the library is part of this as well. So that makes that up. So that makes up a total of about 468 active employees right now. And there's now 177 retired members and beneficiaries, folks that used to work for the city or their families that are still drawing a pension from this fund. So those folks generate a liability and we calculate those liabilities. And on page three then, it's just a brief representation of what's going on. You can see the blue is the active folks and the red is the retired liability. So as the mayor's already pointed out, the red you see is growing a little bit every year because we've had more folks retiring in the last several years. The blue for the actives, it's gone up some over the years, not as much because we got a lot of turnover in the early years as we know. So you can see the total liabilities of the fund of what people have earned at this point in time and what we're paying people. You put that into a dollar amount, it's about $60 million, as you see in that chart. And it's roughly $40 million for actives and $20 million for retirees. Page four, here's another way to look at that.
Jody?
Yes, sir.
Two questions. One, the acronym G A S B, what does that stand for?
GASB.
GASB. I didn't know I'd use that yet, sorry.
Oh, well, it's on page two, I guess, unless I'm in the wrong.
Oh, you're on, he's on this.
Never mind, never mind.
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, I pulled out this summary information. I am going to talk about that in just a moment, though.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Excuse me.
I will catch you, though, just in just a minute. Page four of this little packet I brought you then is the assets. Green is assets and red is the unfunded part of the liability. So you see that builds up and you see the $60 million over the most current year again. And you see how much of that is covered by assets. So of the $60 million of liabilities that we have for all of these folks, $41.7 million is covered by the assets of the plan. And the other $18.6 is what the city still owes and needs to make up either through investment income or contributions over the next few years. So you see how that that has, it's shrunk at times when we've had better luck in the market, but it's up to $18 million now, that unfunded amount. Page five gives you a picture of one of the reasons that this has been happening. We've talked a little bit about the retirement benefits and that's what's supposed to happen. People are supposed to get to the point where they want to, can retire. And, but you see, the regular monthly benefits that this plan is paying was only about a million while the income to the plan that was coming in every year was close to $2 million. But over the past nine years, eight, well, I only did eight years here, but over these eight years, you see when we get out here to this year, we expect to pay about $2.1 million in benefits. And that's regular monthly benefits. That's not the lump sums that are paid to people who quit before they're vested and some vested people that quit that get a lump sum. So the regular monthly benefits are going to be over $2.1 million. And the amount that the city and the employee contributions bring in is going to be less than $2 million. So we have more money going out now. That's not a bad thing, but it's something to be aware of, something to know that we're kind of in a different point in the life cycle of a plan. Page six is there just to illustrate for you that this is not, and again, as the mayor's already pointed out, this is not a new issue. This is something that we've known about. That difference can be made up either in really good investment returns above what we expect, or you have to have more contributions. Well, you see that as a percentage of salary, which is an easy way to do apples and apples, that we were just under 15% a few years ago. And it went down some, but back up and down a little bit, but then now it's up to over 17%. And that's made up of two things that I'll talk a little more about in just a moment. But it's made up of normal, what we call normal cost, which is the amount that we need to pay to the plan for everybody's benefits that they're accumulating this year. So this year's service. And then the rest of it is a payoff of the unfunded, which is previous year's service that we don't yet have funded. So you put those two pieces together, you get this recommended contribution. And you see there's some upward force on that number and it's kind of creeping up on us. And it's one reason we need to address it at this point. But it's creeping up partly because the city's been paying the 6% and the employees 4% for a long, long period of time when the recommended amount or the amount to catch everything up where it should be has been above that. So it's almost akin to having a credit card and paying the minimum payment on it only. That won't work because your debt will kind of accumulate that way. So page seven, I'm not going to read you all of these numbers, but all of these numbers is what made up the graphs that we just looked at. And you can look at those a little more later or as you please. The one line I will point out that I haven't mentioned is that funded percentage that we talked about a moment ago. After the Great Recession, the crash, whatever you want to call what happened in 2008, the plan dropped down to low 70% there at 1-1, 2009. Made quite a bit of headway in the years as the market kind of caught back up. And then we've had some bumps. And then in this last year or two, we've slipped back down and we're down to about 70% funded. Now, most folks like to see a public plan funded at 80% or more. And that's just a rule of thumb. There's no, nothing magical about 80%. Really, what we want to be, what we'd like to be is to be close to 100% funded and just, you know, as the market kind of ebbs and flows, we'd be just above or just below that. But most people say as a rule of thumb, you want to be 80% or more. So we're lagging a little bit there. Not time to hit the panic button, but time to pay attention and make sure that we're paying attention to what we have here. So that's what's on page seven. Page eight, I want to take just a moment on this because this is something, and this is something that Alderman Witcher had pointed, said, we need to kind of look at this all side by side because this could be helpful to everyone here tonight. Because there are differences between the non-uniform plan and the uniform plans and APERS. And so I put just some very basic information side by side for these various plans so that you can see the non-uniform plan is there in the first column and then all these others are off to the side there. But for this plan, evidently, the employees have been paying 4% and the city's been paying 6%. Everybody that's in this plan are eligible for social security, so they're out of their own paychecks or taking out the 6.2%. And the employer, the city's paying their 6.2%.
Jody, is this?
Yeah, it sure is. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. I was confused.
Yeah. Yeah, the social security for the employee is 6.2. Yeah, just a typo. Thank you. And the employer. And I use 6.2 because that's the pure social security. The other 1.45% is Medicare and all of that. So this is just pure social security. And the reason that's important to point out is because, you know, you probably remember, but just to remind us, is that our uniformed folks, firemen and policemen, do not participate in social security. So one reason that their plan is significantly different than non-uniform is because it's taking care of social security and retirement all together in one plan. And that's part of the reason why you see they contribute, the employees contribute 8.5% of pay. And the rates for the system is there. And I've got the LOFPI-only piece and the consolidated piece. You, oh goodness, about 15 years ago now, it's over 15 years ago, that the city voted and took the old plans and consolidated those with LOFPI. Well, you've got your LOFPI-only rate and you've got a consolidated rate for those folks that are all retired at this point. There may be one or two, but for the most part, they're all retired and that's still the payoff of that. Just so that you have points of reference, the expected 2016 contribution into this non-uniform plan is going to be just under $1.2 million. That's what that 6% looks like in dollars. And all these other plans, they're all lined out here. If you go all the way to the right, I just added up all the uniformed plans, all the uniformed folks, that the LOFPI bill would be about $6.3 million, of which 2.7% is offset by the premium tax that gets turned back to the city, actually goes directly to LOFPI. And then also, you've got the dedicated millage that comes in for one mill each for fire and police that goes into funding those two plans. Anyway, that's a comparison there. And if you have some questions, we'll talk more about that. But that's, that's why that page is in there. So conclusions, page nine, here's what we can, can pretty safely say about this information. One is that this plan is now mature enough that we're seeing some of the cash flow is turning the other way. Instead of always putting more money in every year than the benefits that go out, now we expect to pay more money out than what's coming in at the current contribution rates. That's not necessarily a bad thing, but it is something to note because that affects the cash flow of the plan. Because we still have, we still need to build up more funds. The need for additional contributions has existed for several years. We've made that point a couple of times now. But it's also good to note that that will continue to worsen as we go. If we have three years of great markets, it'll take some of that pressure off. But as we know, if we do have three years of great markets, there's a decent chance we're about to have a bad year. So depending solely on the markets to beat our assumptions is not going to fix everything either. Now, GASB 67 and 68. GASB is Governmental Accounting Standards Board and the bane of the existence of actuaries, for the most part.
And accountants.
Oh, and accountants, okay. But it has all the rules to make the, make the financial statements GAAP compliant or audit compliant. One of the big things that happened in that world in the last three years has been the passing and implementation of these two new standards. And the big thing that happened with this, and you'll see this in the next month or two, I think, when you, when the, that your audit is complete and your CAFR is complete, you're going to see that the liability for pensions is no longer back in the footnotes. And you probably remember when you got to looking at CAFRs, back in the back, there were pages and pages of footnotes. There'll still be pages and pages of footnotes, but the liability for pensions is moving from just a footnote to being something that'll be on the balance sheet of the city. And that's about as far as I can go there. If you want more information there, we'll make Karen get up here. But it will, it will be shown as the fund balance. And very likely, between the LOFPI plans and between this liability, the fund balance is going to be on paper negative, very likely. So these liabilities are going to be seen on page two and three as opposed to page 112, so to speak. So they're much more visible now. And so it makes it something that more people will look at. Another little side problem with all of that is that one of the things that we're charged with doing now is doing this, this cash flow. Based on the city's funding policy and your assumptions, will this plan cash flow out until everybody that's working for the city or has worked for the city has passed away? So we run a 100-year projection to make sure that, that there's enough money there. And with the current funding policy, since, you know, over 9% of that 10% is going to pay for this year's, that's that normal cost I talked about, it's paying for people that are working right now for this year. So we have very little left to pay down that unfunded. And what that means is, over a long, long period of time, it would cause the plan to cross over, is the word that's in there, that, in other words, the assets would be depleted. Now, that's not this year or next year, that's not for 25, 30 years at the current situation. But it is important enough to note so that we can correct it long before we get to there. So instead of doing like the federal government and pushing social security off into the future, into the future forever and ever, this is a good time. And the reason that I kind of made a point of making this this year for everybody to make sure we paid attention to is because it's a great time to say, let's make sure we start turning this ship now instead of when we get further down the road and have a problem. Which is kind of what the last point is. This is not an immediate liquidity issue, but as with many problems, it's much cheaper to begin to correct that now. So what are my recommendations? Last page. The goal of any well-funded pension system is to not only pay for the people who are working today, but to be able to pay for any unfunded liabilities over the expected work-life of that workforce. Because if we don't do that, we face the risk of kind of falling down on our duty and pushing off current cost to the next generation or the next group of people. So if we want to do this right, just kind of as a gold standard here, we want to be in a situation, and expected future work-life is around 15 years, just a little less than 15 years. So we want to be able to pay not only for what people are currently earning in their pension, but the most, best way to handle this is to pay that off in 15 years or less. So that rate, that rate would be as a percentage of payroll for a 15-year amortization of the unfunded. And the normal cost would be just over 17% of payroll, 17.31% of payroll. And that compares with the current 10%. And, you know, but I'm not completely blind. I'm not operating in a vacuum. I know that you can't go from 10% or 6% up to 17 all at once. So one of the things that we worked with the committee and talked about quite a bit is what would be the good starting place and what would that be? And the last two bullets there is what that, what I think that would be, is for the board to commit to that good funding policy, that over a period of time, we want to get to a place where we're paying normal cost and a 15-year amortization. Now, that may be 17%. Hopefully, it'll be a little less than 17% because there's some other things going on that hopefully will pull that back some, but it's not going to pull it back down to 10. But I think that the board should seriously consider looking at immediately, or for 2017, going ahead and doing 3% of payroll, which in dollars and cents, well, I'll say that in a moment. But the reason 3% is it does two things. It is a significant first step to getting to where you need to be. And then if you take that significant first step and you still need to march up a few, few more years, then you will have done something that will change, change the direction of the plan. But the other thing that that will do is 3% of payroll would be, would be enough to kind of change that GASB projection that I was talking about. Because if we have 10% over a long period of time, we're never going to pay off the unfunded. But if we have 13% over a long period of time, we will, we won't pay it as quickly as we should, but we would at least pay it there. And that will help in the presentation of the liabilities. That'll make that presentation a lot better and make the liability number that shows up in the front of the CAFR in your, your next year CAFR significantly better. And what does significantly better mean? This year, the unfunded liability, we already mentioned, was about $18.6 million. But because of this item that I talked about, what will show up in the CAFR for the plan in total would be almost double that. It'd be a $35 million liability. So if you take the step of doing, and I realize that the GASB disclosures and everything, I realize that's paper and it shows up there and people see it, yes, but it is not an immediate demand on the city in any form or fashion. But it is a big number. And if you could guarantee that in next year's budget, there was another 3%, you could drop that $35 million back to the $18 million range to make that look better. And again, how significant that is, that may be a question you want to ask Karen in a couple of moments. So lastly, what does 3% of payroll mean? There's about $20 million of payroll covered in this plan. So 1% is $200,000, so 3% would be $600,000. But not all of that is city general. As I mentioned at the very beginning, this plan covers not only a lot of your city general employees, it covers electric and UAD, which have their own sources of income that pay for theirs, and the library, which also pays for their portion. So it would not be a full $600,000. It would be roughly 65% of any increase that you make would be, 65% of that would be city general. So 1% would be about $130,000, so three times that is $390,000, is what 3% would mean to city general when you start looking at that from the budget standpoint. Those are my recommendations and the reason for them, and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Questions. Mr. Fauch.
According to the chart currently, we're about 69, 70% of assets versus unfunded liability, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm not sure I got the right term, but IRISA or Department of Labor, some of those people have a red zone, yellow zone. How far down do we have to go between the yellow zone to the red zone before the government demands we do a fix?
Okay. Well, good news, IRISA is a broad term that covers all the federal law that deals with Department of Labor and IRS as far as pension funds go. The, a lot of that applies to governmental plans like this plan, but a lot of those laws do not apply to these plans. So all of this red zone, yellow zone that requires a rehabilitation plan to be filed with the feds and all of that kind of stuff, luckily, none of those sections of code apply to this plan.
Because so basically what we're doing right now is preventing us from becoming like some of the larger cities who all of a sudden find themselves in deep financial crises trying to recover, recoup from their current retirement plans that they promised all the employees to get reelected and everything, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah. And we're a long way from that. We're
What is your comfort zone?
For some of my plans, I put, you know, red, orange, yellow, light green and green. These markers are really yellow. These markers are really yellow markers. These are not orange or red markers yet, because I think it's my duty to make sure you don't get to orange or red type markers, and I have to say, you know, if you don't do something, you may run out of money in just a few years. I don't ever want to have to be in that position. So, that's why I'm bringing this now, as an important concern, but not trying to oversell, because these are yellow markers. We would, I'd, we'd be light green if we were over 80 percent. We wouldn't be bright green, but we'd be light green. But, so we want to get there as quickly as possible to feel good about it. We're not paying enough to pay for normal costs and at least interest on the unfunded, so that's a yellow marker. If somebody was taking a hard look at this, they'd say, that's not a good sign, it's not danger zone yet, but it's not a good sign. So, that's kind of where we are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Comments, Mr. Witcher?
You know, for your information, about two years ago, we started wrestling with this issue, when I say we, the Investment Retirement Committee. And this year, we focused on it, on the fix. And Jody's been working with us, I guess, five or six months, maybe longer, looking at all these figures, trying to figure out where we are. We met again this afternoon, early, and the recommendation, we voted, and the recommendation of the committee is to do a 3 percent increase to the city, which would put us at 9 percent. Also, to look at our overall investment policy, we have had a tough time in the market.
Please state that.
Overall investment.
Yeah, our overall investment policy. We have a very conservative investment policy, to protect the assets of our retired employees and active employees. We are going to look at expanding some of those investment opportunities, and we will look at that very carefully. The goal will be to go into, you know, we have not, I think our goal is about 7 percent, we have not hit that in four or five years. And so, we need to get that up, and that's part of the issue that we have here. So, if we increase 2, 3 percent, if we make some changes in our investment policy, and if the council will consider committing to a 1 percent on an annual basis for a while, in theory, and I realize, you know, we can't, we can't commit other councils in the future, but if, you know, but from a management standpoint, if we make that decision, then that will put us back on the road, I believe.
Ms. White?
This is probably a real oversimplified version, so we're talking about 130,000 per year? Is that...
Per percent.
Yeah, per percent.
So, it'd be 390.
Okay. For the 1 percent, yeah.
Then your thought is to do 1 percent a year, starting in 2018, until we get to that 17 percent mark?
Well, we might not have to get to 17 percent, depending upon what the market does also. You know, there are a number of factors involved. But that would make us whole if we went all the way. You know, again, ideally, we'd like to be about 75, 80 percent funded. That would...
And it can change real quickly. I mean, I remember when the numbers were over 80. And as you can see, from 2015 to 2016, it went from 70-something to 69. So, it can do it in a hurry, especially if you have a down market, and as conservative as we are, we're not going to lose a lot, but we're not going to make a lot either. And most of the actuaries, even on LOPI and everything else, I think they figure 7 percent, but I don't, Murray said, it's been years since we've gotten 7 percent return. I think we did, since a lifetime, or since Stevens has had, it's averaged about four or five.
And just over five, I think.
Yeah, which is not bad, you know, but it's conservative as we are, you know, just this year was the first time that we went over 50 percent in commodities.
Equities, yes, sir.
You know, our proposed financial plan accounts for 7 percent on an annual basis from our income, and we just, you know, we haven't been making it. So, 2008 was a real kicker. That's kind of where we are. All right, now, I think Karen and I had a discussion this afternoon, and I think from a mechanical standpoint, what we would like to do is to get an informal vote from the council, and then we'll bring back our recommendation in the proper format at the next council meeting.
So, what's your informal motion?
To increase the city's portion from 6 to 9 percent for fiscal year 2017, and to commit, from a management standpoint, at least 1 percent for the next several years, to put that on solid footing. And then also, we will come back with a plan to reorganize some of our investments. And of course, the council will have to approve that also. That's it. Right, Karen? Did I get all of it? Okay.
Thoughts?
So, 3 percent would be for 2017, and then 1 percent 2018 on?
Correct.
That would be the proposal, provided the council agrees to it on an annual basis with a budget. You know, and we understand, you know, it would have to be a council agreement from that point on, in the budgeting process.
Was it an annual increase?
Ms. Ross?
So, you said this doesn't, the 390,000 doesn't include wastewater and electric, is that correct? Was there another?
No. Wastewater has their own plan, and electric would be...
Is part of this plan.
So, the all non-uniform, the general fund, parks fund, street fund, community development, electric, UAD, library.
Okay, so wastewater is not...
But the general fund is only 390,000.
Right. The general fund is about 130,000 out of 200,000, so a 1 percent increase is about 200,000.
Okay.
So, 130,000 of that is, well, and we say general fund, that really is everyone except electric, UAD, and library, so that would also be split out by parks, and street fund, and community development.
But we would also have to have them agree also, correct?
Say that again.
We would also, no, we don't have to have them...
We make the decision.
Okay.
Okay, you know, again, remember, you know, you're talking about 65 percent for the general fund, and the balance is paid by the other entities.
And I believe, Alderman Witcher could correct me, but the library, I have communicated to the library that this has been being discussed, and I believe that Crystal has been trying to include these numbers in her budget.
Yeah, Steve and I met with Library Commission this morning, and we talked about that, and she's plugging in to her budget for this year, so...
That was it. Yeah, we're, I've looked at all the budgets, except electric, and I've got a meeting with electric on Thursday, I believe, to go over their budget. You know, can we afford it? Yeah. You know, do I wish that we didn't have to pay it? Absolutely. But in this particular situation, we got to do it, and we don't know that we have an option.
So, Mayor?
Sure.
So, Karen, the hit on the 2017 budget is 390,000, is that what you said?
In total, it would be 600,000, but to the general fund, parks, street, about 390. And I don't have that exact breakout between those funds.
Electric, of course, is the highest paid.
We can afford it. You think we can afford it?
Yeah, I mean, we'll put it in the budget and present it to you in total, but, you know, our, you know, of course, I'm very proud of these numbers, and I hate to, I don't want them to dwindle, but, you know, we've moved from 6 million in the last four years in our fund balance to, as of yesterday or the day before, it was close to 15 million. So, we've got some money there, but you blink twice and add 600,000 and give a raise, and then all of a sudden, you start eating at it real quickly. And that's forever. You know, when you give raises, they're forever. So, we just have to be careful, and we have to be prudent, and that's what we were hired to do, so. All right, we want to take an informal...
Informal, unofficial.
Raise the hands, those that would agree for us to bring you back a budget with a 3 percent increase.
Very good. Thank you.
Any opposed?
Okay.
I do have one more question.
We'll prepare the legislation.
Go ahead, absolutely.
This is for Ms. Scott. Is she going to do a presentation?
Ms. Scott? No, we're...
Okay. Mr. Carrero said something that kind of caught my attention. Are we paying lump-sum payments to non-vested employees when they terminate employment with the city?
So, non-vested employees are entitled to all of their contributions when they leave.
Okay, it's just their personal sides, not the city portion of the contribution?
Right. Now, vested employees can take all of that when they leave.
Yeah, I understand, but that's the vested portion of that, so they're on contributions they can remove and switch to an IRA, or whatever it is they want.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay, I will make one other comment. You know, if you look at these charts, you'll notice that this particular account does not have a COLA on it for the employees, and that's been one of the things that they have asked for, for a number of years, I guess the last five or six years. We have not felt like it was prudent to put that in, and most certainly, we would be really in bad shape if we had done that. It would be nice, in the future, if that would be a consideration of the council.
Well, you know, we certainly can consider it, but when you hear that number, it's so alarming on how high it is, that I don't think we'll ever be able to reach it. You know, the mistake was made 30 years ago when that plan was set up, I guess, so we can fix a little bit of this plan, we can't fix all of it. Okay, Ms. Robbins?
How many years does a employee have to work for the city before they're invested?
10.
10 years.
10. That's fully vested. Department heads are two. Okay? Okay, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to take a two-minute recess, and then we will come back in, and some of our stuff, we can't cover until 6 o'clock, but, so, we'll go, for those that want to leave now, or powder their nose if they can, we'll have one-minute recess.
If anyone's here that wants to sign an item during this meeting, you need to sign in now, or you will not be allowed to speak later.